Good evening and welcome to the master, I mean, the planning boards[18.02][18.02](laughter) meeting this evening. I'm joined today, well, first of all, let me start this again. I'm Cheryl Taguayas, the Chair of the Planning Board. I'm joined tonight by my fellow board members, Denny Swenson, Kathleen O'Donnell, April Anderson, and Rich Beeler. We also have members of the Select Board here tonight and members of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. There could be others with other associations here, and I'm sorry I've missed those. Our agenda tonight is strictly limited to work on planning for East Milton Square, and we have consultants with us who will lead that work. I do want to make one announcement before we get started with that, and that is the Planning Board's next two meetings of the year, the last of our year, are December 5th and December 19th. Agendas for those will be posted at least a couple of days before those meetings, and we do have some projects and initiatives that might interest you, so you could check the website for those agendas. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Judy Barrett of Barrett Planning Group, and like to say that Judy comes with a lot of experience, and on behalf of the Board, we're quite excited to be working with her.
Thank you.
And welcome, Judy.
Thank you very much. So hi, everyone. I'm not here alone. I own my own firm, Barrett Planning Group, but I'm joined tonight by colleagues from Dodson &amp; Flinker, Peter Flinker, Dylan Zussman, and my colleague Alexis Lantolata, who works with me. So we're going to do a little bit of a presentation here, because we don't know, coming into these processes, what background information anybody has. So you may hear some things you've heard before, but we don't know that you know this whole background. So we're going to take you on a little bit of tour as to what the planning conversation has been here the last few years, and then we're going to introduce you to the topics that we're going to be discussing tonight and the activities that we're going to be trying to ask you for your help with. So just to be clear, we've been retained by the Planning Board, so that is our client. There is also a Steering Committee, which is sort of like a working group of folks who are named up here. They are kind of liaisons to the community at large. If you have particular concerns or something, you can talk to any of those folks. We'll probably be using them a bit as a sounding board as well. And then, of course, you have the Planning Department staff and our consulting team, as I just introduced a minute ago. So I'd like to take you back to the master plan, because I'm a planner, and I really believe in people kind of looking at their master plan and saying, "What guidance does that give us?" So the Milton Master Plan was completed in 2015. It was led by a dear colleague of mine, Daphne Palitis, and there are some references in the plan that I think kind of helped to provide a little bit of context for why this conversation is happening. There's an overarching goal about making the business districts distinctive and active throughout the day and the evening, offering a variety of merchandise, services, and experiences, and so forth, to meet everybody's needs, and the creation of mixed-use development in desired locations to increase the tax revenue and create vibrant centers. So that's sort of an overarching goal. There were some other goals, one of which was directly to improve this particular business district, and the Master Plan talks about your other business districts as well, but this one seems to have a particular focus. Some strategies that are talked about in the plan to address concerns that came up at the time in the Master Plan process was to develop a parking management plan for East Milton Square. We understand that there are concerns about parking adequacy or finding parking, and that's not an uncommon thing that we hear in planning for business districts. Sometimes it's a supply issue, and sometimes, frankly, it's just a parking management problem. So one of the things the Master Plan talked about was looking at a parking management strategy for East Milton Square. And then some issues that the Master Plan kind of mentions, as things that would need some more discussion in the future, which is part of why we're here, was recognizing that the town has a strikingly small commercial tax base, so people pay pretty high taxes to live here, which, you know, actually makes this kind of an interesting place for us to come to work, because people pay a lot to live in Milton, and therefore, we assume people really must care about this community. So, you know, kudos to all of you for having this town that is very, very pretty. But these are issues that the Master Plan sort of said, "You're going to need to look at this some more beyond the horizon of this Master Plan process." And the beauty of a good Master Plan is that it kind of sets you up for the things that you know are going to need some continued discussion, and it sets you up to do things that you could do right away, which, you know, has been the case here. So following up on the Master Plan, the Planning Board was asked in 2017 to initiate a planning process for East Milton Square, and toward that end, the town requested of the Urban Land Institute, and I'm going to talk about them in a minute, a technical assistance panel to come and help kind of brainstorm about East Milton Square. So the town had to put together what we call a briefing book, sort of a lot of information for this panel to consider, and there were three sort of overarching questions in that briefing book. One was, you know, "Can you help us, Technical Assistance Panel, understand kind of what the best practices are in district-based planning and stakeholder engagement? This is something we think we need some help with as a town." Another question was, "How do we deal with the boundaries of the study area?" You know, I do a lot of work in planning kind of district sort of level, you know, looks at conditions, and sometimes you have to sort of separate, there's a zoning boundary from a context boundary. So understanding kind of what are the boundaries of the area that we're actually studying, and how do we think about managing those boundaries from a land use perspective was another set of questions in the briefing book. And then the third was, kind of, "What should be our priorities for moving forward?" So when communities approach Urban Land Institute for a technical assistance panel, ULI puts together a group, I've been on these, they're wonderful, a group of professionals who come to a community for a day and do a real deep dive. So we come, I was not on this technical assistance panel, but we come to a community having read the briefing book, you know, really having immersed ourselves in what's going on in the community, and you spend part of the day talking to individuals who have a particular stake in the process. It might be some Planning Board members, it could be property owners, it could be an Economic Development Commission, or, you know, Boards of Selectmen, whoever. That's really up to the town to sort of figure out who those key stakeholders would be. And then the Technical Assistance Team typically will do a walk-around, take a look at the conditions that are under study, and go into a huddle. And you go into a huddle, and you try to come up with some ideas for the community, and out of that came the ULI TAP report in 2019, which made several recommendations. One was that the town needs to work on trying to build consensus about what do people want in East Milton Square? What do they want to see in the future of this district? And that's where we are now. The other recommendations were kind of refine the vision, provide regulatory tools. Now, the zoning code here is kind of old and tired, and perhaps does not give the town really the tools that it needs to support the evolution of East Milton Square. That's not uncommon, it's not unique to Milton. We have a lot of old zoning bylaws and zoning ordinances in Massachusetts that need help, so you're not alone. And then to think about how do you encourage what you want. So many zoning bylaws and ordinances are written around what communities don't want. So how do you then think about a code that says, "This is what we actually want"? Well, one way to do that is to think about the predictability of an approval process. So I know, if I'm a property owner, I kind of know what the community wants, and I try to scale my project accordingly, because I want to get to a yes. Most people who are in the real estate development world just want to get to a yes. So the clearer you are about what you want, and one way to be clear about that is to design a permitting process that actually makes sense, instead of something that takes three years, that's a way to kind of signal to the world what it is that you would like to see. So those were kind of the big sort of overarching recommendations that came out of the ULI TAP report, TAP meaning Technical Assistance Panel. There were a number of concepts talked about in that plan that I think is just worth reviewing. And one was to really think about a vision plan that will accommodate mixed-use development, thinking about multifamily housing in this area with an inclusionary component, meaning a requirement to include some affordable housing, given that Milton doesn't have a lot right now. Expanding the boundaries of the commercial district. And I'll show you a map in a minute that's hard to read, but there is a map kind of depicting what the ULI panel was thinking about. Allowing more height and density in select locations. Thinking more about the public realm and public space, and how to make the public spaces more attractive and engaging to the people who live and work in East Milton Square. Doing a market analysis to understand what the market really is looking for. Having a parking management plan, not necessarily more parking, but thinking about how do you manage the parking supply that you have, preserving the character, the historic and cultural character of this area, and improving walkability. So those were sort of the ideas that the panel had for what a vision plan for East Milton Square ought to at least account for in some way. And this map, which I grant you was difficult to read, is sort of a representation of what the panel was thinking of, and so the areas that are in orange are places where there was some thought about perhaps either expanding the boundaries of the district or changing a mix of allowed uses. But the nice thing about this map is that it really sort of orients people to thinking about the ways in which the street system is an integral part of how you think about planning this area, and how you think about mobility through the area, and what the sort of land use connections need to be. So that map, unfortunately, it's just a kind of fuzzy map, but I think it kind of gets to the point that it's a combination of walkability, it's public space, it's mixed use, and perhaps thinking about ways in which the boundaries probably ought to be shifted a little bit. Now, the good news is, these are not a decision. This was strictly the recommendations of a professional panel that came in for a day to work with your community. It was based on their observations. They're all planners, market analysts, engineers, and so forth, but it's not a decision. So there haven't been any decisions made at this point, but it does provide a starting point for discussion. It defines an area for vision planning, which may or may not coincide with some change in a zoning boundary, we don't know that yet. The area is really a planning boundary, it's not a zoning boundary. And I want to just point out to you that when you start working around the different stations that we have set up for you this evening, there are some maps at at least one table, I think this one, this large one up here, where part of Adams Street was just cut off because of the size of the maps, but there's another map up here where we kind of capture all of Adams Street. So if you notice something missing, like if you live in this area and you can't find your house, chances are it's just kind of where the boundary was cut off. But anyway, I just want to reinforce for people that a lot of work has been done to get to this point, but fortunately, you know, the decisions are yet to be made, and that's why you're here, and it's why we're going to be asking you to return for a couple of more meetings, which we'll talk about a little bit later this evening. This is not the only shot that people have in trying to help kind of vision what East Milton ought to be. So I, at this point, would like to call Dylan up, because Dodson &amp; Flinker did tons of work to prepare for this meeting, the materials are just stunning, and so they're going to walk you through kind of what's going to happen over the next hour and a half or so.
Good evening. I'm Dylan Zussman, like Judy said. So the goals for tonight are to begin to build a sense of consensus around what East Milton Square should be, and then from that, in a series of additional meetings, we'll develop a vision for East Milton Square. So a vision in our mind is, you know, a rough drawing that shows what's possible in East Milton Square, and what people want the place to be. So tonight, we're really focused on getting as much information from you all about what you know about the area, so identifying its strengths, its weaknesses, and its opportunities, thinking about trends that may be affecting the area.
Do you need the microphone?
Sure. I can, it's awfully low, and I'm a very short person.[846.45][846.45](laughter) So, and then after we have identified the strengths, the opportunities, and the weaknesses, we're also looking for identifying preliminary goals for the area, and then some of the key features that we think that the vision for the area should have. So key features are things that, like the ULI TAP report identified, better management of parking, or improved streetscapes, those sorts of things. So tonight, we are, the way the evening is set up, after this introduction concludes, and it's pretty much over, the presentation, you all are going to circulate amongst a set of stations where you do activities designed to draw out the information that's in your heads and what you know about this place that we don't know as outside consultants. And then after you do those stations, which will go on for about 45 minutes, we'll all come back together again for a discussion of what you saw when you were doing the work, and what you want to see in the future. So, like I said, there are five stations. Station one is in the back of the room. It's looking at maps of East Milton Square, and[921.82][921.82](pause) they're going to be colored, they're going to be colored Post-its on the table and some markers, and so we want you to write comments on the colored Post-its and stick them to the map. And so there are some green Post-its, those are for things that are good, these are strengths of East Milton Square. There are some yellow Post-its, these are opportunities for East Milton Square. And there are some red, they're pink, because when you write on red, you can't see it. So there's some pink Post-its, and these are for weaknesses of the area. So green for go, yellow for sort of pause and think, and red for maybe we want something to change. There are two different kinds of maps on the tables. There's a big one that's a photo map, and you can really get in there and see, like, "Oh, there's a sidewalk here, and there's something missing over there." And then there's one that's a bigger scale, it's a smaller map, but it's zoomed out, so you can see a broader area. So in that one, it's useful to think about connections between East Milton Square and the surrounding neighborhoods, think about broader patterns of traffic circulation and walkability, think about open space, maybe. There's a park that's sort of on the edge of the neighborhood. So that's station one. There are actually two station ones. So there's one in the back, and there's one here. Station two is on the back of this wall, and it's what we call a visual preference survey. So there are a series of photos on a sheet of paper, a big sheet of paper, and there are some colored dots. And so again, take the green dots and stick them below the buildings that you think are appropriate for East Milton Square. Take the red dots and stick them below the buildings, the photos of the buildings that you think are inappropriate for East Milton Square. All of this is written on your agenda, I'm just walking you through it. Some people learn by hearing, and some learn by reading. So if you don't really have a strong opinion, maybe don't stick a sticker on it. You don't have to stick a sticker on every image, but the ones that you feel really strongly like, "Yes, this belongs," put a green dot on it.
One dot.
One dot each, yes. You only get one vote per image. So that's station two. Station three is just down the wall from it. Same idea, green dots for aspects of the streetscape and open space, and outdoor uses that you think are appropriate, red dots for things that you think are inappropriate. Station four is over here by the cameraman, and there actually is a camera there. What you're going to do there is, it's an opportunity to give more of an open-ended comment. So there are some whiteboards that you can write on, and there are two prompts, you can choose to do either or both. One prompt is, "My wish for East Milton Square is," and you fill in your wish, you write it on there, you stand in front of the flag, we'll take a picture of you. If you'd prefer, you can take your own picture, you can take a selfie, and then if you do that, we'd love for you to post it and hashtag it with "East Milton Square." So that's one whiteboard. The other prompt is, "East Milton Square is." Tell us what this place is. It's awesome. It's awesome. Okay.
Kind of like, "East Milton Square is, what is it today?"
Exactly.
And then next, "What is, what could it be?"
So Peter said, "Today, it's, 'East Milton Square is, that's what it is today,' and 'my wish for it is what you want it to be in the future.'" And then the fifth station is along this wall, sort of tucked into the alcove over there, and it's admittedly a little complicated, but we want to try it out and see where we get. So that's a, it's a grid, and along the top of the grid are different groups of people who have a role to play, or might visit, or might live in East Milton Square. And along the left side of the grid are things like housing needs, transportation needs, open space needs, et cetera. And the goal here is for you all to think through different groups of people, and what East Milton Square can be for those people. So, over here, we have young people. What kind of needs do young people have for transportation, and how can East Milton Square fulfill those? What kind of needs do they have for open space, and how can they fulfill those? Or those same kind of questions for commercial property owners. Right? So when we fill this out, we'll begin to see where there are overlaps and where there are potentially conflicts. And it's also an opportunity to start thinking through this area from the perspective of a whole community, not just whatever interest you represent. So those are the stations. We have about 45 minutes to walk for you to do them, and you're free to go through them in whatever order you want to, to do what you want, to skip what you don't want to do.
And there will be a facilitator.
And then, and we'll be circulating, so we can talk with you and give you help and hear what you have to say. All right, you're free to roam.
Does anybody need an agenda that has instructions?
So one more important thing, please don't leave after you do the stations. We're planning on having a group discussion afterwards, and it's really important that we hear from you. So don't run out after you've done the stations. Hello, everybody. It's time to make your final comments and take your last picture, and come on back and grab a seat, so we can all have a conversation. Thank you.
Dylan?
Yes.
The possibilities let them talk and repeat what they say. What if they have a wrong conference? We should buy a sound system. I get so tired of this.
We can stretch these to the first few rows and pass them around.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Otherwise, ask people to
Would you be willing to shuttle a mic?
I would be willing to do whatever means.
Who's going to be, be honest, if she would take? Do you still want to do this?
Peter, what's going to start?
Can I help? Oh, okay.
We got one that goes that way, one goes this way.
Could you, if anybody didn't sign it, put your hand up and pass the paper around?
Okay.
We want to make sure that everybody's here, so we can get up to them.
Okay.
Show them, show me where. Who comes to them?
All right. Thank you all for giving us your input and telling us about your community. So this is going to be slightly awkward, because this meeting is being televised, and so for people at home to be able to hear what you're saying, if you want them to hear what you're saying, you'd have to speak into a microphone. So the microphones have a limit on the length of the cable, so if you could come up to the front of the room and speak into the microphone to make a comment, which is going to make this a little bit more stilted than we would like it to be, we'd really prefer this to be a conversation amongst you, right? This isn't a Q&amp;A, we don't have any, we don't have any dog in this fight, we're not making any proposals. This is really about people in East Milton talking to each other about, in Milton, talking to each other about what they want from the area. So just to get us started, you all made some comments, you saw what other people wrote. So what were the patterns that you saw in the maps? What did you see in terms of patterns of strengths and weaknesses in East Milton Square? Hearing none, we can go home.
I'll stand up, I'll say something if you want me to.
Thank you. Yeah, great.
You didn't ask for name and street and stuff like that.
If you'd like to.
Yeah, okay. So I guess, as I've read through the TAP report, which I did read through, and I've watched the presentation today, my thing is, is, is East Milton a business district with residences?
Oh, there we go.[1486.45][1486.45](laughter) Don't push the button. So, is East Milton Square a business district with residences, or a residential neighborhood with businesses? And what I've seen in East Milton Square in the years that I've lived in town is, there is not sufficient infrastructure to support the existing business needs. And so when we talk about expanding the business district, before we've solved the issue of how we support what's already there, knowing that in 1952, they demolished 50% of the district, it just concerns me. And then, it really has to do with the infrastructure that's there, and that's what I'll say.
So I heard two things in that. One is the question of, is this primarily a residential district, or is it primarily a commercial district, and how do you negotiate the balance between those two things? And then the other thing I heard was, you know, do you lead with, he's saying, "Don't lead with development, lead with the infrastructure. You need things like parking and traffic improvements before you do development." Does anybody have an alternative perspective, or want to augment that? I heard you guys were going to be rowdy, you're very calm.
Okay, well, I think in the square, we have to have development, and then the people will come, but it's a two-edged sword. You've got the people, there's no parking, so we have to figure out how we're going to bring the people into the square, because the squares don't use that much. Other than the restaurants after 5:00, there's very little walking traffic, simply because people can't find a parking spot there, or there, they just don't want to walk. So we have to find some parking for them, so the people will come and visit the little square, and we have to get more businesses back into the square. One time, we had delis, we had a movie theater, we had a bowling alley, we had a card store, we had a video store, we have a jewelry store, and that's about the, one of the last vestiges left in the square that people actually go to. We've got plenty of nail salons, but we need people to come into the square. People want to move to the town because of the town's schools, the population is growing leaps and bounds in the school, we need a new school pretty soon. We need transportation issues to get people from, leave their cars at home. We have it down in Milton Central Village and Lower Mills, because they have the trolley, the old, old Tuterville trolley, and it still works, and they're spending millions of dollars to keep it. And that whole section is revitalized because of the new building going on Elliott Street, and the old Henry's Ice Cream is going to bring in 35 units?
38 units.
38 units of housing in there. People will use the deli down there, if it opens up again, little wine store, the restaurants down there, there's an insurance agency, there's a hairdresser down there, there's a nail salon down there. People want, they want to walk. I was on the original Master Plan years ago, in 2015, and everybody came in and said they want to walk to the square, they want to walk to get a cup of coffee. We have a population that's aging, and they'll all want to stay in their homes as long as they can, but they also want to downsize to a two-bedroom unit, so they can go to Florida in the winter. So we do need some development of apartment buildings, or small condos in the East Milton Square neighborhoods. That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
So if you could, why don't you turn to them, talk to your neighbors.
You guys are going to be one of the plannings, I think you need to hear more from us.
We're hearing you, and she's running down.
They all feel the way I feel.
We want to hear from you.
We want to hear from you, but I think it's important for you guys to hear from each other as well.
Speaking, is traffic, that's the number one. And also, it's the configuration of where the traffic is flowing through. So before you can think of doing any type of businesses, you know, housing, residential, that has to be figured from all the way from, I would say Quincy, they start to, people cut in, probably beyond where the old Villa Rosa used to be, they'll start cutting through and go through all the back neighborhoods of East Milton, and coming out onto Granite Ave. And with that, that creates gridlock with everyone trying to access onto Granite Ave. And that's some type of configuration of one ways, possibly. I think we know that we're not going to I think we know that we're not going to be without any traffic in the square. But for all the residential areas, if you were just hit with it once a day instead of twice a day of cars coming and going, you know, 'cause you have the whole ways thing. So, my street is ways knocking, is sending them through there all the time. And also, for your housing, when you're looking at, looking back at the photos there, I think most people are thinking more of something that looks like maybe a two-story type thing. Maybe there's a business underneath and maybe there's some type of living accommodations on the top. But not going into three, four, and five stories because there's no infrastructure now. You can't make land materialized to have parking and all of that. So, when those plans are going into effect, it really has to be in line with the existing neighborhoods around. And I think that's what, over the last year or so, what most people have had concerns with, with other, you know, companies wanting to come in and, and build something high, three, four, five. And they don't really have the concern for the neighbors. And you asked, is this residential with business or business with residential? I think you're finding this mostly, it's a residential area that does have business as well. And I think the residents really have to, their concerns have to be taken into account. Okay?
Thank you.
So, what do you all see as, as the strengths of the area? What are the things that you'd like to, to build upon, to improve?
Or protect.
Or protect.
So, I'm a, a over twenty-five-year resident of East Milton. I live right on the edge of the plan that you have on that. And it has changed a lot in the time that I lived there. When I first moved there, all of the shops that this gentleman had mentioned were still open and then they all closed. So, for the longest time, there wasn't really much going on at all. And so, it has now livened up because of the restaurants. But there's really no reason for people to go there except for those restaurants. The Fruit Center is around the corner. That obviously generates a lot of traffic. But in the, on Adams Street itself and on Granite, there's really not much. And there certainly isn't anything to attract people with children. I mean, one of the things that I sort of wrote down in some places, why don't we have like an ice cream shop for crying out loud? We have pizza, you can get that. But we don't have enough things to attract other people from the rest of the town to that area. And we don't really have a whole lot for those of us who live there. One of the things that I had suggested a number of years ago was, why didn't we have some kind of like a WeWork space? Although they're filing bankruptcy, that's probably not the right word to use. But, you know, there are a lot of people who, like me, work and live there. I work in my house. So, if you need to do, you know, faxing and make copies and you wanna, a sort of business support thing, that would be a great little business. Everybody's jammed into Starbucks, you know, which is great for Starbucks. But, you know, that's not a really great place to work. It's not like a place to have a conversation with a client, let's say. But there, those kinds of activities would get more street traffic. And, and, and that's not really requiring a car. You can walk there. And so, and there's, there's buses that are there, but there's no bus shelters. So, people waiting for the bus and all kinds of weather are out there. There's not benches for people to sit on while they wait for the bus. It's really not a very lively streetscape. Doesn't really encourage anybody to go there at all. And when you're walking to the post office, you're pretty much taking your life in your hands. So, that's the kind of, I mean, it's a great location, but as somebody has mentioned, there's really not any variety of housing. There's, you can have a single-family house or you can live in your car if you can find a parking space. So, it's not, there's not opportunities for those of us saying, "Do I really wanna be, I wanna be in this neighborhood, but I can't find anything that I could move to that would be smaller."
So, do you think that there should be opportunities for other types of housing?
I do, I do. And I think that would increase the, the sort of the walking traffic too. Is that if you had an opportunity to say, "Okay, fine, you can sell out from your single-family house and buy a something that is small," we don't even really have condos or anything. And, and if you wanna rent an apartment, that's virtually impossible as well. So, there's really only the businesses and the single families. So, there's no middle ground. And I think there should be.
I think we have some wonderful businesses in East Milton Square. But I think East Milton Square feels like roadways that people are going places to that happen to have businesses alongside them. It makes it really difficult to feel like a cohesive pedestrian-oriented district, especially with the configuration of the district with these sort of little lane, roadways peeling off. There's lacks, it lacks cohesion. And the safety, the pedestrian safety has really only gotten worse in the twenty years that I've lived in Milton. And I, I do think that the, the traffic situation is a real key to making it feel more like a district. And then, just one thing, just for folks to realize is that some of the businesses that are in the district are actually not in the district, they're in the residential district. So, part of thinking about the boundary is really thinking about whether they should become a part of the district. And part of that really just has to do with the review process, the sort of the regulatory process, how they go about when, when change is desired, what kind of review it requires. Should it really go through a more burdensome process than the other businesses go through? How you regulate the signage for those is different. So, um, so some of that doesn't necessarily, in terms of thinking about boundary, we could also think about sort of enfolding those into the district. But then, I, something else is, I think, for people to think about is how to transition from the business district into the immediate residential district. So, for people who do work from home, like right now, our zoning or our regulations don't allow somebody who works at home to have an employee. So, if our attorney here wanted to have one employee...
Don't have one.
Can't do that. But is it, is there something where you transition from a, the business district to a, a portion of that that allows for a small home-based business that could have an employee or two or something like that? So, anyway, that's part of the, the conversation. Maybe that's a small yoga studio that could be associated with someone's home and that transitions then to the next residential district. So, think a little bit beyond purely the definition of, of what the business district is, I think.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm joining you. I've lived in Milton for sixty-five years plus, mainly in East Milton. At seven twenty-nine today, I heard the word that I...
Don't hold the mic so close.
Okay. At seven twenty-nine today, I heard the word, which is my major concern, my wife's major concern, traffic. It wasn't on any overhead. And that's my major concern. Any development, it can make the traffic worse. And I, I heard in one report that something was gonna have minimal input. Well, minimum, minimal makes it worse. I'll give you two examples of, my wife wanted one thing mentioned. Yesterday, my daughter, my granddaughter was left off the bus on Adams Street, had to cross the street. Four cars went through the bus, you know, it was stopped in both directions. You can say that has nothing to do with anything, but in a way, it does. Everyone's caught and they just rushed. Yesterday, for the nine-hundredth time this month, I ate at one of the restaurants at East Milton Square and I couldn't get a parking space, but my concern was not the parking. It was, there was a truck unloading at the, some of you already heard this, at the corner Franklin and Adams Street. The driver did the best he could, the truck driver. But just that little bit made Franklin Street one-way, backed everything up. And, you know, it's almost like the residual effect. And we just can't have more unless we figure out the traffic. And I'd like to see something innovative, but I haven't yet. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, as, as Judy said earlier, the master plan identified the need for additional commercial tax base in Milton and the need for additional and more diverse housing. So, given that you all have a relatively small number of commercial districts and relatively little land that's zoned for diverse housing, it's easy as an outsider to make the leap that this is a place where those things would be suitable. But I feel like I'm hearing tonight a sentiment that maybe that's not the case. So, or I'm maybe hearing a mixed, mixed opinions on that. Does anybody wanna speak to that? So, how does this area fit within the town as a whole and the town's goals as a whole?
I think that's why we're here, to find out from you what we should be doing. And you've done a lot of these projects. What are the, what are other towns doing? Let's not start from step one. Let's skip step five. See what you, your opinion is. Should we, you're not gonna satisfy everybody. I mean, some people want residential, some people want commercial. Some people want twenty-story buildings, other people want a park. We're just looking for some guidance, I think, 'cause we've been through a number of these committees, master plans, plans, you know, we're killing, I don't know how many trees with all these books, papers. So, that's what I think everyone's here, they want, they, this is what you should be looking at. Because we really don't know.
Could you all hear what he said?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess I'll just say one thing to that, which is that I, I think my experience and I would say definitely Peter's and my experience and maybe Judy's too, is that we can't tell you what's appropriate because you have to come to consensus about what's appropriate before anything can change. So, no outsider can come in and tell you, "This is what this place should be." We can help you come to the best decision balancing what you want and what's possible. But you have to decide as a community together what you want and what is acceptable. And it's a complicated trade-off amongst different interests and different needs. So, if you're a property owner in the area, there may be no immediate benefit for additional development in that area. But if you're a resident and a taxpayer in the town or somebody who wants to be able to walk to a shop, there may be a benefit. So, it's, it's a really complicated balancing act and you all have to do it together before we can help you take the next steps to making that come to reality.
Which I think is why the ULI TAP report said your number-one next step is a community consensus process, which is why we're here.
So, on the topic of housing, we have residents, some of whom are friends of mine, who are leaving Milton because they're older and they need smaller places to live that don't have yards to take care of. And they feel that they really need to be able to walk more to amenities and that driving will be less and less a part of their lives. So, I ask us all to think about that as we, we go forward.
Thank you.
Let's, you have a chance and then you can talk after.
Thank you.
Sure. Hi, everyone. I think that I'm really impressed with our shared value and our ability to say that as a community, what we'd like to see is a place where we can work, we can live, and we can play in a way that really is helpful for everybody here. So, whether you're a resident or a visitor or a business owner or any other iteration, and it feels like our value is building momentum towards a solution, which is really nice 'cause this has been going for a while now. So, thank you to those who put this all together. I know consensus is not easy. But I think what we need to do is address infrastructure at the front end. Because without that, we're not gonna be able to figure out a way to get to understanding how to build housing that's reflective of our values, how to address transportation that solves for the many challenges that we have because of external factors that we don't actually have control over, like a federal highway that runs through us. And so, there's pieces, and we have, I think that, you know, Melinda's point about an aging demographic, we are aging faster in Massachusetts than most places. We need to be thinking about housing, transportation, and community that reflects that. And so, what's good for someone pushing a baby carriage is also good for someone who has a broken ankle and uses a scooter, is also good for someone with a walker. And so, we need to start thinking about how community develops around those values. And so, if we can build consensus around that, I think it will be a really big success. So, I'm looking forward to that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I just wanted to let folks know that the traffic and parking situation and loading situation in East Milton is not, it is being looked at in a tangent process or a co-linear process. There was money allocated at last year's town meeting to do a town-wide traffic study, in part, not the full town yet. But a contract has just been signed and the consultant's about to begin. And one of the focuses of that work to start will be East Milton Square. And part of it is going to be building a model, which can document what, the conditions that are on the ground today and then plug in potential changes and see live how that change might impact the conditions on the ground. So, it'll be a very useful tool for the planning and a useful tool for even improving conditions without new development. So, it is something that's on the front burner. And look for that work to be done in the, at least in the next few months. Is that right, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. So, the, the speaker before Cheryl, I'm in the back now. Identif, she said that, she thinks that people agree that there should be a place where people can live, work, and play. That sounds like the beginning of a goal for the area. Do people agree? Is that, is that something that you could all raise your hand and say, "Yes, this should be an area where people can live, work, and play"?
Yeah.
Yeah? Anybody opposed to that?
No, no, I just wanna say that I think the hesitation that you're hearing about the live, work, and play isn't really hesitation about live, work, and play. It's more that, you know, I, I'm an eighteen-year resident in East Milton Square. In those years, I have approached the traffic committee, or I think that's what they're called, for traffic calming measures. And you get responses like, "Well, there's forty percent more cars on the street. They have to have somewhere to go and that means my neighborhood." And so, we've never been protected from the traffic by the town. And so, I'd love to see development. I love walking up to the square. And I've never had trouble finding a parking place, by the way, when I do drive, but...
You should tell me where your parking space is.
Be just patient and pre-visualize and you're fine. But, but I, even, you know, we want the development, but we wanna be protected. You know, and I, and I, and this, this new traffic study is the first positive thing that I've, I've heard in, in, ever about that.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I definitely understand that there's hesitance around probably a lot of things, like what kind of live and what kind of work and what kind of play. But as a general, broad goal, it has some validity. It's telling us that, that you do want a mix of uses, that you don't want this solely to be a residential district or solely a commercial district. Right? So, what are, what other features of the area would you, would you like it? I've heard you definitely would like the traffic to be, you'd like less traffic, probably. You'd like the traffic to be slower, you'd like it to respect pedestrians more. I've heard that you'd like street crossings to be safer. What other features of the area would you like to see in the future?
Parking.
Parking.
Parking. People that wanna come in and enjoy the, whatever that means, but also I think a big piece, you know, talking about just drink in Milton, you know, come, purchase someplace, rent someplace. But I think the bigger thing is to be aware of all the residents that are immediately around the square. We are the ones that are most impacted by anything that is going to a one. And we've had things in the past that, you know, wanting to go into three, four, or stories and we're saying, "You could take..." and were saying, you could take it, if there's no infrastructure, but that many, you know, having four units going in somewhere. It's not going to be in line with the square. It would have to be something on a much smaller scale, like a residential field than something that's very large. And I think that's a concern for any of the residents directly around East Milton Square, of what is going to go in, what's going to be put in.
Yeah, there's a lot in that statement. I want to unpack a little bit of it. The idea of the infrastructure and whether infrastructure can support things, I want to dig into that and be really specific about what infrastructure we're talking about. So is it that the sewers can't support, or the water system can't support it, or the school systems can't support additional residents? Are we talking about, we can't handle a single more car? Or we need parking for...
Roadways and pedestrian access.
Roadways and pedestrian access. This is nomination. Anybody else want to nominate something?
Second.
I would add bicycles.
I think it's all about traffic, when we say infrastructure. I mean, I think that's always been the big, I think the schools are on the list, but they're on the list in other areas, and I wouldn't say it's... But there are space constraints too, right? So I mean, it's not, have to be realistic about that, too. It's not the boulevard, you know, there's pictures over there, they're lovely, about cars coming in the sides.
Or there.
Just talking about the fact that it's, space is tight there. So that's a reality, too, that you can't have parking everywhere. But what I'm wondering is if the buildings, there's, Cheryl, I think you were talking about how there's so many points that are cut off. And you, I'm thinking about like over by the Dunkin' Donuts. You drive in there, or you drive in the other way. Like, in, in other towns, I feel like the shops are just stacked up the front, and all the parking is in the rear. So you can park once, walk around, and enjoy everything that's on that strip. So, something like that, I could see working a little bit better. But, to your point, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, sir. But I, yeah, I'll guess it later, I'll find you. About looking to this team to find some answers. I, I don't disagree with you, because I think change is always different and scary, and we don't know what it's going to be. So we're looking for someone to say, hey, here are some really good ideas. This is what's worked in other places. And I hear your point, that you need feedback from us. But what I would find helpful is a little bit of both. Like, I hear that you need, you need to know from us, but I think we also, like some of these images, here's, here's what another town did. And here's what happened because of that. And no town's going to be exactly like this, but it would be nice if, on God's green earth, there was other towns that had a highway that cut right through it, or, you know, really, really tight constraints. And what kind of solutions did they come up with? Even if it didn't work. Because I think people are interested in development, but the fear is then, I don't know what that means. If I say yes to it now, I still want to live in my house. And then, you know, in five years, in a year, am I going to be able to still park in my driveway? Or am I going to take me an hour to get home? So, knowing more about what could happen, I would find useful in the process. And that's a little bit of what I think I'm hearing.
Yep.
That's helpful, thank you.
How many of you are residents of the area?
Almost everybody, I think.
Okay. So, just a small handful of you are not. I'm, I'm curious, how, how uncomfortable is it to live in this area? Is it like, oh, the traffic is a pain, but I tolerate it? Or is it like, this is really grating on my nerves every day?
Dylan, can I just offer, I was speaking with a few of the ladies here who have joined us, who didn't feel like they had the mobility to move around to the stations. And one of the things I wanted to make sure that got heard was really something that I would consider universal design kind of features, is what are, and it's the public realm. So are sidewalks, are they safe for people who are getting elderly, who might need assistance? Is it safe for people who are pushing strollers? So not just on crossing the streets, but what are the sidewalks like? And what is it like to access the businesses? And even are there amenities on the sidewalks? So if people want to stop, take a rest, sit on a bench? Are this, how about our public works? Is the snow and ice cleared off so that people can use the sidewalks? So really, kind of, when I think of infrastructure, let's think of it that way, too, the, the public realm and our public investment.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming. So I've, I've had the...
So close to the mic.
All right, I got it. I'm not even going to use it. So I've had this from many views. The newest is, I live right on there, I live right on Crane Park, which, right near Andrews Park. I give it to you in an analysis. Anyone read the story in the ledge of the other day about when 93 opened, when Route 3 opened in 1950s? The governor spoke, and it was going to be the greatest thing since sliced bread, because it was going to carry 50,000 cars a day from the south into the city of Boston directly. That same road, which is unchanged, as well as Granite Ave, which is unchanged, Adams Street, which is unchanged, Willard Street, which is unchanged, today carries 200,000 cars a day. So, and I walk outside, anyone, anyone who lives on my near, anyone who lives in that bracket, Eaton, Churchill's, all, many of you spoken tonight, any of the streets around the square, you see, you see it start to come around 5:30 in the morning. It's like a wave, it's just a pressure. And it just, and it, it just car after car after car after car. And it just continues. And then by 10 o'clock, it disappears. And if you walk, like Andy, if you walk down Andrews Park at 10, 11, 12, it's a totally different place. Am I right, Joe? Totally different there, you walk to your, totally different. And then to your point, about 2 o'clock, it starts to change. It's like the tide. It starts to come, it is exactly what it is. It's like the tide. It starts to come from Boston, and it's pushing towards the south. And it catches on the other side. Governors, Otis, they, they take that cut, Bryan Avenue. It's queued all the way, you get on Bryan Avenue, it's queued. So, we live in a highly mobile society, and that one aspect of it, to me, affects every other thing you want to do here. It affects parking. Take any Saturday at Andrews Park, spring or fall. We have a beautiful playground, it's used by young parents who move here every day. Every park has a brand-new kids' playground in it. Used every day. Who lives near Andrews, raise your hand. Okay. What's Andrews like on any Saturday or any weeknight, and then any other streets around it? It's a good thing, hundreds of kids are coming to use our parks. But the infrastructure of the park, the parking lot, is about the size of that chair. Am I right? I mean, it just took us, on an act of Congress, to get stairs put in, just to one of the interests. So, when I go, when they talk about infrastructure, parking is definitely one. All the infrastructure, signalization, all of that. But it's going to be a very monumental thing, and I think of this all the time, every day, to try and deal with that tide. The tide is going to come and go every day. And these people live with it every single day. It's good and bad, and they're great. Andrews is beautiful, am I right? We have a beautiful parks. Crane is beautiful. The restaurants today were five-car dealerships 30 years ago, or four-car dealerships. Now the restaurants, the bowling alley's still there if someone wants to open it. And the lanes are still in place if someone wants to bowl. But these are things that they need help, that we as a community are going to need help with, because these affect their life every single day. On top of all the other good things. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dylan, one, one additional thing. Any development that happens, which we're all looking forward to seeing what that looks like, really needs to have the benefits be matriculating back to the residents of Milton, and also be sustainable. Because we want to make sure that this is forward-thinking. Because we know that it takes a really long time to go through this process. And by the time we get through this, we don't want us to be starting up again. So those benefits really need to be honed on what the residents will benefit from any development.
Can I just say something about housing, right? So I'm listening, and, and everybody is kind of talking about it. I think we lose sight that Milton has multifamily homes in it. I live on a street where there are six multifamily homes. That means there are six units people can occupy. And we haven't talked about it, but Milton also has some really large houses in East Milton. So, maybe the opportunity is to allow some sort of a development of those units, those houses into multifamily units, keeping the scale of the neighborhood the same, but bringing more residential people to it. And then that would update them to make it easier for people to get in and out of those homes. But again, there are six, and I know with some of the overlay district stuff you've shown, you're talking about removing those multifamily homes. Or putting an overlay district into them that could potentially remove them from the housing stuff.
I want to be really clear that we're not showing, we haven't proposed anything. What was shown was, came out of the ULI TAP.
Slides, the cable in the TAP book.
Yeah.
Show houses being removed, or potentially in an overlay district, that are multifamily homes that allow people to live in this town. It doesn't have to be a 60-unit apartment building.
Right.
It could be a bunch of smaller buildings, residential neighborhoods.
My name is Dick Burke, and I just want to make a couple of comments as being a member of the Master Plan Committee, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and also the Traffic Mitigation Committee, as well as this one here. So there's a lot of different hats. And I just want to make some, some, just some comments, as we hear traffic all the time. And I think a couple of things have come through on a number of meetings we've had in the past year. Number one, no one's going to disagree, traffic in Milton, not only just in East Milton Square, but throughout the town is a real mess, okay? And let's, we can, we can sort of move by that just a little bit. There's another interesting point that's come out in a number of the meetings we have. No one in the town of Milton, and probably no one here in this room, thinks they're part of that problem. All right? So everything, everything is coming from, is someone, someone coming through the town. Another observation is, something is going to happen in East Milton Square. I grew up in Milton, I know Mr. O'Neill, Joe and I, for years, we've seen changes. For years there, changes have been steadily happening, and, and changes will continue to happen. What makes it a little different is the current zoning allows developers to do things that some people may or may not like, but that's in the current zoning. There's, there are other programs, 40B developments, which allows a developer to come in and do other types of projects in East Milton Square. So let's just keep something in mind. Something is going to happen. As we're going to, we're going to be part of managing the change, or be, or watch the change happen to us.
So I'm going to return to what the woman in the far back said earlier. One of the things she said is that the development has to, essentially, the development has to be in scale with the neighborhood. And she mentioned, you know, three or four stories, or five stories. So, how, how big is of an issue is it the, the actual height of a building? Is it, is it the height of a building, or the bulk of a building? Or is it the impact that that is going to have on traffic and parking?
Yes.
All of it. So let's talk about, we've talked about traffic and parking. Let's talk about the just building bulk and building design aspect. What fits, what doesn't fit? What is the character of East Milton Square?
Look at the green dots.
So tell me what you guys put dots on.
Two or three stories, probably, was probably the most popular.
I think that's, yeah.
You know, the idea of mixed use, I think. I was on a TAP years ago in Northeast Harbor with ULI. And the, and the, people can hear me without a mic.
But the, people watching can.
Oh, right. So, so the idea of mixed use, two or three stories, I think is something that would fit the, the idea of the square. The, something that's seven or eight is just not, there's nothing like that in Milton, anywhere. And so I don't think we really want to have something plunked into the middle of East Milton that doesn't look like the rest of the neighborhood. So, you'd be really looking at something probably no taller than four, at the most. But, you know, two to threes, the idea, I think, that people would be mostly looking at. And looking at the dots, I think that's the ones that people found the most attractive. With more street life that we know we would be trying to, so it's not just a block, but something that has something on the first floor to attract people. And to incorporate, you know, softer streetscape that allows for pedestrians and, and that sort of thing. People walking, sitting, wider sidewalks, that sort of thing. And so I think that, you know, East Milton's kind of interesting. I, when I first moved to Milton, I lived on the other side of town. And my idea of moving to East Milton was terrific, because you didn't have to get in a car to get a quart of milk. I mean, that's the real attraction for this, for this area, is that you can have a residence, like I do, right a block off of Adams Street, and you can get pretty much everything you need by walking. And so it's unusual in Milton, because the rest of Milton doesn't have that at all. And so it's a real, it's a real attraction to that area. And it certainly has gotten to be a lot more popular over the last 25 years that I've lived here. Because people are appreciating the fact that there is the opportunity to walk to a bank, to the post office, to restaurants, to market, all that sort of stuff, which is not available in the rest of the town. And so we should be really appreciating that and selling that kind of asset, as opposed to people, when I first moved to East Milton, were like, people were like, oh, you're living in Quincy, for crying out loud. I mean, it was just like not considered the place to be. And so, you know, I think that it's, it's something that we should be sort of selling to, to the rest of the town. This is the opportunity. And to sort of make sure that the commercial mixed-use sort of thing fits in, keeps the residential component, but also allows for some other kinds of uses as well. I mean, office is tough, I don't think, retail, we're not going to get big retail. Nobody really is going to be doing that. That's a, a market niche that's probably not doing very well anyway. So attracting some fantastic store is really not the, the option that we should be looking for. But things that you can not get on Amazon, experiences that you cannot get on Amazon, are things that we should be looking at for East Milton, in my opinion.
So we're drawing very close to nine o'clock, so let's say two more comments, and then wrap it up.
Come on up.
I think if, you want to maybe get, maybe an idea of it, if you look on, it's on Adams Street now. And they have just built, it's, it's a physical therapy place on the, on the first floor. But I think that size is kind of in line. You know, we have, as you...
Next to the governor's...
Pardon me?
Next to the governor's solicitor building?
Yes.
Yeah. It's, you know, it's presently has...
Counselor, sorry.
It has business on the bottom, and there's probably two apartments on top. But something of that nature versus, we have gone through, we're not going to name names, but we've gone through an issue where someone wanted to put in four stories. And right, right at the Bass Food Center, that whole area, four stories is way too high. It's not in line with all the homes in that area. And the infrastructure, all of that's a concern. So I think you're really looking at something, it's maybe a couple of stories. Two, three tops, I think, is where people, living right in the area, because we're the ones impacted by it all the time. So, you know, we'd just like to have that as a thought.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd love to invite anybody who hasn't spoken yet to come up.
Sorry. I, I know we're talking about density, but I'm going to bring it back to parking just for a second. And I agree with the density size that has just been kind of stated. And at least from my perspective, is I live, I live right behind East Milton Square. And, you know, we have a problem kind of with enforcement, with parking. And, you know, as new businesses have sprung up, there's, you know, creative plans on how they'll get deliveries, and where people park that work there. And unfortunately, over time, what you see is, you know, any given day, you go down Franklin Street, and you'll see one or two very large box trucks, or an 18-wheeler like today that was up on the sidewalk. And then people parked illegally. And so then what you get is, you have safety issues. And so if you live in the neighborhood, and when folks say, hey, I want to put in five stories here, or six stories, and I want to have this many units, and we want to bring more people to the neighborhood, you think of all the years that we haven't managed what we have, all the years where we're not enforcing, and the businesses, and I love the businesses there, but, you know, deliveries are just everywhere. And so, because we see that, and because literally you now see, I don't know, it's a new thing I've seen, there's U-turns happening right in the middle of, right before I'd be parked now. Every day I see a U-turn there. It's, it's crazy, and it looks scary, because there's kids walking around there. And there are days where I pull down Franklin, and I have to back up, because I can't get by. The car is parked. And so we've put parking on both sides of the streets now, in different areas. And you've turned two lanes into one lane. And so, when... And so when you have that environment, and then you think, wow, there's more coming, what is it going to look like? And so, I mean, I think at the same time, the town and the businesses that are currently there, need to start thinking, how do we help with those issues, so that folks can actually visualize, oh, wow, we do have opportunity, you know, here? Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have time for probably one or two more comments.
Yep.
And then we need to wrap up. It's fine. Wherever you want to be, it's fine.
That'd be great, thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, sure, sure. Can you hear me okay? So I'm Jenny Swinson, and you had asked for a positive. And one of the things that I think is most positive about this neighborhood, is the neighborhood itself, and, and the sense of community. It has a new neighborhood association, well, I call it new, it's like three or four years old, and it's one of the most active neighborhood associations in town. They've been incredibly resourceful, they have a community award, and they, they're just an incredible neighborhood, and they do have an incredible sense of community, and they do live, work, and play in this area, and they, and they invite all of us to as well. I think because of the traffic issue, and, and just because of a lot of the issues that people brought up today, they are looking for pedestrian-friendly. I hear from the neighborhood, I'm on the planning board, I don't, I don't live in this neighborhood, that there, you know, I think it was a year and a half ago, we got, I got like something like eighty emails from this neighborhood at one point, and they were, they stated over and over again that they knew when they moved in, they were living near businesses, and they're okay with revitalizing the business area, they can see the need for that. But they stressed, a lot of them stressed and told me personal stories about saving up and moving to a town, leaving the city, buying into a town, and they wanted to see it remain as a town. So if there were ways for, for the residents or the neighborhood to be able to visualize the changes, to be able to imagine or understand what kind of businesses could work here, so they could visualize those businesses and, and plan around those visions, I think that that might help. Let's see. So I also, one thing that we haven't really talked much about is more green. Green spaces and trees are very, are traffic calming, and I think if we could start to visualize those things, and, and visualize, you know, visualize the businesses that would work here, and visualize green space and open space, it would help, it'll kind of help us get through a lot of the humps.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the last comment?
Speaking for somebody else and my neighbor. And simple, I, I agree with what everyone said, starting with Mr. Burke, and Kathleen was great. Very simply put, a lot of the neighbors feel this way. I moved from South Boston to raise my family here in East Milton. I think that's pretty simple.
All right. Thank you all for coming out. We're going to have, we're going to have another meeting, we're going to have another two meetings, is what's in the scope of work that we have. We haven't scheduled the next meeting, I imagine it'll be sometime in January.
Just a quick, one question. Someone selected, and I mentioned this to Mr. Clark today, perhaps for accommodate East Milton's neighbors, if you could have a meeting the next meeting at the Mac, would that be better, maybe more people would walk and go there? We have a meeting in East Milton. Yeah, maybe we could better idea?
We, we'll try to have the next meeting somewhere in East Milton. The Mac does work, the Miltonite Center.
One of the things they have been cognizant of, before you go, folks, is that not everyone can make it to the meetings, and so we do like to make sure that we have audiovisual, so that people who are watching can take advantage also. And to that point, we wanted to make you aware that these visual preference studies are going to be put in Town Hall, in the hallway where the planning department is, until December thirteenth. So if people who are watching and want to provide input can do that up until December thirteenth, in terms of these visual aids. But if you want to provide feedback beyond that, or in addition to that, you can email the planning department with any comments about what you see tonight. Thank you.
Can we make sure that everybody that didn't sign in, signs, signs the, sign-in sheet on the way out, and we'll make sure that anything that we have, we'll send it out on that email list? Thank you.
And with that, we are closing the planning board meeting. I'll take a motion. Kathleen, I'll take a motion.
Motion, I have a motion to adjourn.
Is there, all in favor? Thank you. All right. I'm out of the... (laughter)[1788.78]